Hi, everybody. I think we have a quorum now with four of us. My delay will be a few minutes late again. Melissa should be joining within a half hour or so. And since Emily's not approved by, and I said yet there are only six voting members, so four of us should count. So 6:07. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. First, order business is routine, just approval of the agenda for the meeting tonight. Do you have any edits on the agenda?
I don't know if it matters, but there was a comma missing in between two names. You know, just that it's clear that it's two people and not.
I'm going to, I feel like that we can let that slide. So given that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you. Second order of business is to, is minutes from last month's meeting. I similarly don't have any edits to these. Does anybody have edits to the minutes from November?
The comma that Ma was talking about is missing.
Okay.
But that's it.
Charles, you're doing a very good job. Thank you again. We will, we will, we will hold you to the Oxford in the future sessions. As long as that is what we're, as long as those are the edits, I will go ahead and again make a motion to approve minutes for November meeting as written. Do you have a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Great. Thank you again. And we will go into, now we'll go into new business.
Michael, can you please forward the slides?
Yes. Did you want to start with the executive director's report?
No.
Yes. No.
I'm watching the me, I'm just watching the first slide and I haven't seen the following. I don't know if it's just my computer, maybe the slides aren't forwarding online.
Mike, mine's on the first slide as well.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm showing slide four. Let me see if I can adjust if there's an internet problem on my end. Start sharing again. Is that better?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay.
And we were on new business. Is that where you want to start, Gabrielle, I believe?
Yeah.
Might be the previous slide.
This is the the start of new business. So we have some academic updates as well as operations.
Great. Well, our business is the business of education and thank you all again for giving of your time this evening. Thank you for being our leaders in the community. Our agenda this evening is really dedicated to the wonderful educational work of our team. We have a presentation and overview by our school principal, additional operational updates by our deputy director. These academic updates are primarily Delly Ness's to report on, but I will call out one thing that Michael did today that was very important for our school. We called it out in our board bullets and for the sake of our community, we're building out our library and we're very grateful. I want to call it out, a shout out especially for Christina Gutierrez, who's one of our instructional coaches and dean of instructions. And so she's, she reached out to Brooklyn Bodega and was able to get us a donation of 500 books and it's a mixture of Spanish, English books and we can use them all. So I just wanted to call that out to the board and let you know that our team members are also doing work over and above their regular daily work and certainly getting a donation of this size is an important contribution to our mission. So I want to thank Delly Ness and her team for doing that. Delly Ness, would you like to take these bullets on the educational aspect of our reporting, please?
Great, yes, thank you. Hi, everyone. So just a couple of follow-ups from the last time we were together. We talked about how literacy was going to be a big key goal for us in terms of our focus and sort of honing in on making sure that that piece of our daily instruction is prioritized, given the data that we collected back in August, September, October, while we were doing our baseline data collection to see where our students are coming into the school year. As you all know, we transitioned over to remote back in November and we hope to resume in-person instruction when we return from the holiday break, which is January 5th. In the last few weeks that we've been remote, there are a couple of things that we have rolled out. We have rolled out what we call guided reading or small group literacy instruction within the remote schedule that was previously not part of our remote schedule, but we have added additional time where kids are seen during the afternoon in smaller groups, groups of up to six students and they work with teachers on the particular skills, strategies, reading level that the child is currently in. We've also started our response to intervention program for our students who have been remote. So currently we have, we have our full-time interventionist and then we have a part-time interventionist that's working with us. They are seeing kids first thing in the morning, kids who need extra additional remediation and support. There's, they have extra time before the school day starts and they have extra instructional time at the end of the school. So during the morning, there's a math, during the morning, there's a literacy intervention block for our students who are on RTI. And then in the afternoon, there is a math intervention that's happening for the students who need remediation in math. We also have partnered with an organization called the Go Project that provides Saturday tutoring to students and also provides a summer program that's academic for students as well. Currently, we have about 16 families who have fully submitted their application and we're working with the ProGo Project to finalize a couple of more. Michael, do you want to talk a little bit about the Verizon Remote Hotspots?
Yeah. In a partnership with Verizon, we've been able to be approved for 40 remote hotspots. We'll be activating about eight of them immediately for families who are in remote classrooms who need that help. And then the others will be able to activate with unlimited data plans as needed in case of a future closure or if remote, other remote families turn out to need it. But Margarita Chang was able to push through that process and get us through. And so we're anticipating receiving those devices by the end of the calendar year.
Thank you. As Roberto mentioned, we were able to get a donation of 500 books from the Brooklyn Book Bodega. And that all started while we were thinking of this literacy initiative and developing a love of reading. And we were researching different organizations that could partner with us and we came across Brooklyn Bodega and as Roberto mentioned, our, one of our current deans of instruction reached out to connect with them. And we are really grateful that we were able to get this donation. And so we see this donation as Roberto had mentioned on some of the notes to expand our library, but also to provide kids books that they can take home as well and develop a library in their own homes so that we are also providing our kiddos who we might, who we may know need more books at home, books that they could read at home. A little bit around my, we've also partnered, as you all know, with the Bellwether Education Group for some consulting work that they're doing with me and my instructional leadership team. And that has proven to be extremely helpful. I am very grateful for that partnership. I am working with someone called Monique, who is a veteran principal. She's found in her own schools. She ran a number of KIPP schools in California. And so she's been working very closely with me and my team to look at areas where there might be gaps, particularly around our literacy instruction and providing us coaching and support as we develop a plan of action to, to address those gaps that we might, that we're seeing in literacy. Trimester One report cards have been distributed. They went out on Monday, yesterday. And tomorrow we have our parent teacher conferences that are ready to happen. So looking forward to that and having our teachers have the chance to have some time to talk to the parents and talk about the progress that their children are making at our school. Okay. So just to preface this a little bit, I had presented a a, I'm sorry, a presentation to the education and accountability committee the last time that we met that was concentrated or focused in on our second grade cohort. As we've previously mentioned before, that is the cohort where we're seeing most need in terms of academic gaps, literacy gap. And so Melissa and Gabrielle had requested that we sort of look deeper into what's going on in second grade and discuss what are the things that are being done to address the particular need in our second grade cohort. And so some of these slides come from that presentation. So the issue, so the data that we have right now shows that 60% of our second, second graders DNA that did not achieve, and this is language used in the literacy assessment that we use at our school. They fell anywhere between a pre-read to a step three. That range generally falls within a kindergarten level. And this was true for both the English and the Spanish. I think one thing that I communicated to the education and accountability meeting, that slide is not on here just because it had some personal identifiable information in regards to students. But 52% of our second grade cohort currently is either has a IEP or is an English language learner. So that's something that we are heavily also thinking about in terms of what are the additional needs that our students in second grade have and what do we need in order to best serve our students in second grade? When you compare this to kinder in first, the number of students with IEPs and ELLs in kinder in first are dramatically lower than they are in second grade. So the task here at hand when it comes to literacy in English and in Spanish is that we're trying to close a gap of about two years. And so we're trying to use this year to make this gap smaller and hopefully make two years worth of growth in one year. And so that's going to take a lot of work and I believe it's possible. It's going to take more than just this school year. It's going to take the summer as well. And so we're already thinking through what does summer programming look for our second graders so that they have the additional time during the summer to get instruction and catch up and not fall behind on the progress that we continue to make with them. As you all know, we've hired an additional interventionist who, once we are in person, is really going to be focusing on providing extra support to the second grade cohort. So these are all things that we're doing in order to best support our students in second grade. We're also trying to think through what an after-school academic program might look like and how can we get many of our second graders if we are able to pull that off to enter an academic program after school to get specific extra support on the areas that we're seeing that they're lacking currently in. I'll stop there because I know I said a lot. Are there any questions? Michael, do you want to go to the next slide? So this is sort of where we stand with some of our goals. We, I sort of went through this exercise of looking at what the goals were for our students in terms of step, in terms of map and where we currently are, given the baseline data that we have. So we are far from reaching those goals. What I would say is that step is a new assessment for us. And so there were lots of little kinks to work out, growing pains, components of the assessment that students fail. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're reading at a level below their grade level. It means they missed a component like comprehension. Maybe they didn't explain the story well. There's a spelling component. So when I, I just want to say that when we look at this number, it doesn't mean that all of our kids are reading below grade level, but they didn't pass all of the different components within that assessment to move up a level. And so we've taken that data and we're addressing those smaller gaps that we're seeing that stopped them from progressing in this assessment. And we expect that when they take the assessment again in February, that we're going to see a lot of growth happen because now we sort of know exactly where the areas that they missed on. And we think that there's going to be a lot of room for growth there. So I'm excited to see the results that we get in February now that we have this really, really rich data that tells us exactly where students need extra support. Same thing here. We have the step data and we have the math, the map data for math and reading. And so you'll see, for example, MAP is an assessment we've taken since year one. We have that current data as to how many kids grew one full year from the first time they took it last year till now, even with some of the interrupted learning that happened between being in person and remote. So we did see some growth there, but obviously we want that to be higher and we want to reach our 85% target.
Can I ask a question, Delly Ness?
Sure.
Just, are you guys using both MAP and STEP now or you moved totally to STEP? And how do the two, how do the two relate to each other? STEP, it seems more rigorous and, and then one final related question is like, how do each of these relate to the New York State standardized assessment? Is there any?
Yeah. That's a great question. So STEP is definitely a more, I would say thorough exam and really gives a much more personalized look at where the student is when it comes to literacy. We still use MAP reading and we use MAP Math to additionally test our students. And MAP is really actually supposed to be sort of a predictor of how kids will do on this state assessment. Right? That's, that's, that's sort of the big sell of it that it lets you know how kids are progressing towards being able to do, like to pass this state assessment once they reach third grade. And so we use the MAP Math data heavily to inform like our intervention groups along with the assessments that we do in-house, of course, as well. And then the reading data, we've created charts where you'll see the student's name, you'll see their step data in English, you'll see their step data in Spanish and you'll see their MAP reading score so that we can see how those are correlating or not and look at trends. But for us, we're really focusing even on the literacy part on the STEP data because we feel that if our kids can pass and do well on the STEP, they're going to do well on the MAP reading. And so I do believe that there is a relationship there and that if we're using the information that STEP gives us, that will transfer to better scores on the MAP as well.
And hopefully on the New York State.
And on this state assessment. That's right.
Charles, the STEP plays the role that DRA or Afontis and Pennell or other kind of reading level assessment will often play in conjunction with something like the MAP. Okay. We just find that the data are more actionable because it's not just a letter or a number reading level, but it's actually breaking down a little report card for each kid. You know, what do you need to be working on? Do you need to work on your blends? Is it the short vowel sounds? Is it, what's tripping you up? And so that just is more helpful for a teacher trying to target instruction for, for a student.
Thank you, Michael.
One of the things that we liked about the STEP when we approved it this year was that it had a Spanish component as well. And so the teachers didn't have to learn a completely different set of program and, and protocol and platform. And so it's been part of a good addition to have a program that's been designed and monitored and evaluated by the University of Chicago. It's a great partner to have that Delly Ness and her team pulled that together.
Yes, and I think it helps us look at the whole child in terms of their development in bilingual literacy and becoming a bilingual learner and being able to read across two languages because you're able to see how they're developing both in English and how they're developing in Spanish simultaneously. So these are some of the changes that have been done already. As I mentioned throughout the former slides, but they're just here written out. These are things that we've already have done. Michael, we can go on to the next slide, I think. These are things that are being done currently right now. So the interventionist has already been added. We've made modifications to our in-person schedule right now, remote schedule as well. And we're also, once again, now that we're coming back into remote, considering some scheduling changes in order to have more instructional time with our students. Another thing that we're doing, so as I, as I mentioned, parent teacher conferences are tomorrow. We're really trying as much as we can to get our second grade remote students that are currently remote back in the building because we know that remote learning just is never comparable to the, to the learning that you can get if you are in person. And though while we're not going to force anyone to have to come back in person, I'm joining all of the second grade remote student parent teacher conferences tomorrow to emphasize the importance and the urgency behind this and try to see how many of our families would be willing to possibly come back in person. I'm also, I have a meeting with Michael this week and the instructional leadership team on how we can have EdOps help us better improve our data collection and monitoring systems. So thinking through like, what are the trackers and the systems that need to be created so that we are always collecting the right data and in a format that is easily accessible for all of us. So we have a meeting coming up to discuss that as well. As I mentioned, we're looking at options for an academic after-school program and really working with Monique from Bellwether on observing teachers, seeing where the areas for improvement are, looking at our lesson planning process and systems to make sure those are strong and that, that students are getting what we call the best first teach. And so the goal is that our lessons are strong so that in the future we have to have less remediation happening as we are right now, given the pandemic and the situation that we've all come across. A lot of professional development for our teachers around literacy instruction has been a big focus for us. Particularly how do students learn across two languages and what are the similarities and the differences when you're learning how to read in two languages? And so that's been an area of focus for us in order to increase our students, our teachers, excuse me, content knowledge around literacy instruction. And the most recent decision that we've made, Christina, who, as I mentioned before, she's the one who got us our wonderful donation. She has been working in a dual role of serving as both dean of instruction and response to intervention coordinator, which has proven to be difficult. And so both of those roles are really important. RTI needs to be strong and we also needed dean of instruction who can really focus in on providing the support that teachers need. And so we're going to gradually get her back to focusing just on RTI. And the goal is to hire someone to take the place of dean of instruction and coach and work with our first grade and second grade teachers, which currently, right now, she is doing in addition to her role as RTI coordinator.
Delly Ness, one quick question. Is there, so there are multiple DOIs at the school?
We have two right now. We have Christina and we have Dorsa.
Are they handling different grade levels?
Yes. So Dorsa works with kindergarten and the specialist team. And then Christina works with first and second and the interventionists.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, you can go to the next slide. So just, this was just a reflection that we were taking, that we took away or that I've taken away as this year progresses. I think that one big takeaway and what we're trying to do now is sort of narrow our focus. We, we've tried to do a lot of things at the same time with new curriculums, with different initiatives. But one of the big pieces of feedback that I've received through the coaching that I've done with Bellwether is really thinking through what are the one or two main things that you want to accomplish within a given year? And really focusing on that because as a new school, it sometimes feels like there's so many competing goals out there and sometimes that can lead you in a path where you're trying to accomplish or do too much within a given year. And so that is something that's a big takeaway for me and why we're really focusing on literacy right now. And something that I continue to, as I look ahead to next year, because we're already coming to the new year of what are, what are our goals going to be for next year? And how do we make sure that they're sustainable and that they're specific and that they're targeted? And then also just thinking about teacher recruitment, which, you know, that season is already approaching. And so one of the things that I had mentioned is just, you know, how can we maybe be a little bit more competitive and attract experienced or higher, high-performing teachers? Given just the landscape of, right, you're competing with DLE schools, you're competing with big charter networks. And so that can be difficult for a standalone charter school. So how do we get a little bit maybe more creative and put our thing, thinking caps on and our skills of how we can make ourselves more attractive and be able to recruit top-notch? Sorry. And that's all for me.
One of the points that we were able to work on this hearing was our recruitment and working with a recruiter that Melissa had recommended, Abby Rosenzweig. We were able to track a number of really great teachers to add to our existing cohort of teachers and And we're grateful for that effort. Michael has continued to look at ways to even refine our recruitment further to make it start earlier. Last year, we started, admittedly, with the COVID, the pandemic and all the preparation we needed. We started our recruitment later than we wanted to. But I know that Michael and his team are already working on developing that campaign. We interviewed an individual. And we're also going to be looking at, perhaps going back to Abby, but we're certainly open to working with others who really understand our model even closer to, to getting the, the teacher that comes from a school of rigor and also being able to bring those cultural linguistic attributes that we need at LEAP.
Yeah, right. Our talent is still critical. Does anyone have any other questions on the academic side? Okay, I will power through then. Thank you so much, Deli Ness.
Thank you.
When we last met, we were on the verge of a potential closure and talked through all the health considerations and some of the culture considerations feeding into that. We did go ahead and elect to go remote, as you know. And so we do have our teachers, some of them still in the building and others in different places. They may be in Pennsylvania, they may be in New York City, they may be in Puerto Rico, but where they're comfortable teaching. And I think they have added the certainty of knowing, even though it's not ideal, knowing that when the remote period would be lasting for. We do anticipate and have been trying to keep everyone anticipating that we will return if it's allowed by law on January 4th for teachers and January 5th with students. And are really excited about seeing our students in person again and having the academic benefits of that. In the meantime, our instructional aides have been helping out academically. We've been getting projects done in the building. There's been no lack of activity, including taking care of a couple of remaining construction items around the building. But we are excited and looking forward and determined. Obviously, we can't control what the governor does, but to the extent it's in our control, determined to return and stay in person as much as we can for the sake of our kids and their learning and just their well-being. And we'll talk in a few minutes about a potential schedule adjustment that might go along with that. We, on a more mundane note, we switched back from Little Bird to Trinet along with a considerable discount that we negotiated from Trinet's fees. And upon the completion of the insurance year next fall, we expect to open up again to other options. But by sticking with Trinet, we didn't put our staff through another open enrollment period. And most of the pain falls on Bob Keough. And you guys know Bob doesn't mind that. He just like eats glass for breakfast. So we, no, we are grateful for Maida, who's on the line, who's done a lot of the spade work with this and Bob and his team. And at the same time, we've rolled out our retirement matching plan through a company called The Equitable to make sure that everyone is participating and able to plan for their own futures in accordance with what's always been in our budget and what's always been in our employment agreements. But we have a bunch of folks who've come into that one year of service period where they're eligible for a little match, and so we're glad to make that happen. And then finally, as Deli Ness mentioned and Roberto mentioned, the staff recruiting is beginning again very shortly, and so is family enrollment. We're going to make some adjustments online. We're going to relaunch our communications. We've already been receiving applications for next year. And so, you know, we know it's always work. There's always the tours, there's always the questions, there's always a lot of work to be done. But at the same time, the more we've become established and well-known in the community, the more kind of organic demand comes to our door. So that's, that's nice. And when it comes to the staff recruiting, a benefit of being in person is the opportunity to have in-person demonstration lessons with teacher candidates. It's actually not something we've ever really had. We had a couple candidates do that last year before, before we had to go remote. And of course, in our founding year, we didn't have kids while we were hiring those teachers. So we're really trying to emulate best practices of, you know, well-staffed charter networks to learn what we can and actually see folks teach and let them experience what our environment is like to make sure we get that good, that good fit between a teacher candidate and the school.
One quick question, Michael. I think the bullets mentioned that we're going to be looking into other HR providers now that we've gone, Little Bird has gone back, kind of been reabsorbed into Trinet. I thought the first time we were looking for providers that there wasn't a ton, that there weren't a ton of options. I don't know if we were limited by the size of our staff at that point. We have a little bit more, if we have more options now that the staff is larger and we're looking at next year and expanding it again, is that, what are, what are, do we have a lot of options in this area?
We do, yeah. We, we actually, e- even for this period of time before recommitting with Trinet, we talked about five different companies. And there's one that's a front runner that I think offers a good combination of services and price and, you know, easy to use software for everybody working on the backend. So we will plan to rebid. We've been introduced to some companies, there's some new startups in the space. There even may be new, new startups we're hearing before, before we are ready to shop again coming out of the charter sector. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's interesting. I don't know if this industry is just expanding quickly or what, but we do seem to have a lot more options than a couple of years ago.
Okay, thank you. And I also have a delayed question for Deli Ness, because I was sort of mapping it on my notebook here. So we got our charter in November 2018. I'm just trying to map out. We, we essentially will have, 2021 next year is going to be our first testing year. And by the time we go through the renewal process, we'll have, which will take place over the course of school year 2223. We're just going to have the two years of testing data to be evaluated, correct? We'll have 2021 and 2122. Okay. Got it, all right. So I suppose we'll have to start doing some like odds making at some point between like the, this, this year's second grade cohort and the following year's cohort and to what degree the overall proficiency will balance out. Like what degree one can balance out the other with those two? Because it's just going to be those two bands of testing. Okay.
Yeah.
It was on a delay there, sorry.
No, no, no worries at all.
Thank you.
So we, we had originally scheduled a meeting item related to a possible change in schedule. And we mentioned it in the board of bullets. On reflection, we realize we really still are at the stakeholder consultation stage. So this is not a request for a vote at this moment. But we do want to talk a little bit about the pros and cons of potentially returning to our extended day that we always intended to have, that we had last year and that we adjusted or got, got rid of this fall because of some logistical limitations of our new schedule, which involved having so many different cohorts of students and only so many special teachers to allow their colleagues to take breaks. We've been able to overcome that by hiring some, some terrific lunchtime aides. It gives us a little bit more schedule flexibility. But we still also have, you know, all the competing that we have been talking about in this meeting and the last one. On the one hand, if we were to keep our start time but extend our day until 3:30, we would be able to have even more time during the day for longer stretches of that guided reading practice as we push for literacy achievement. From a family point of view, we would also be able to, we think, get the DOE to resume our afternoon bus service. They, even though it's December, still never have been able to process the fact that we changed our schedule this year. So our families have only had morning bus service. On the other hand, though, you know, and having some extra prep time, as Deli Ness mentioned, getting that high quality first instruction of every lesson, which does take prep, is a priority that we have. And so these are the things that we're, we're balancing. So we're not really here ready to show specific minute, because we're, we're still trying to think creatively about this. But wanted to raise that for you. And Deli Ness, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
I, I think you summarized that quite accurately. I think that we want to be able to get feedback from the different stakeholders here, our parents, our teachers, and also just weighing the pros and the cons, as Michael mentioned, in terms of, right, adding instructional time, taking away, which means then taking away additional prep time for teachers and figuring out which one will lead us to better outcomes. Is it the additional instructional time? Is it the extra prep time? So these are things that we're just sort of reviewing and working on, a draft schedule to sort of compare that schedule to our current schedule and see what makes most sense for, for our school at the moment.
I guess from an organizational point of view, we started Leap Academy with the idea that our students always needed more time. And so I'm very glad to see a return to what we all hope to be normalcy across our fingers. And the normalcy in our case would be represented by a return to the original day part of opening and closing. And Deli Ness will continue to work with teachers and other stakeholders to see how that day part is divided with the different schedule changes. But it's really important to our families to have that extra bit of time as well, not only for student achievement, but it also gives families a little bit more of a break. And particularly for those families that are working longer days, we keep their kids a little bit longer. And so that's, that's also helpful.
How are we planning to get input from teachers and parents on the scheduled change?
Deli Ness was talking to teachers and.
So, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm talking to teachers this week and also when we come back from school, sort of rolling out, this is what it would look like, since we're almost close to the holiday break. But we've already created a draft version. And so I'll be speaking particularly to grade levels to sort of get their feedback on it. And then I'm hoping that for our January 5th education and accountability meeting, we'll be more prepared with feedback already provided by key stakeholders to present to the education and accountability meeting how we're moving forward and what our proposed changes to the schedule are.
Okay, thank you.
So we'd look forward to getting feedback there, but we will keep, keep you all in the loop. And if thoughts or exemplars or questions occur to you, you know, please do let us know, as this is an important problem for us to solve in the right way. We'd appreciate it.
So when would this change take place? Go ahead, Michael.
No, after you.
No, I was going to say, ideally, we were thinking around a launch date of January 11. So sometime it's like mid-January is, is what we're, we're hoping for. Thank you.
Great. The other new business item we wanted to mention relates to potential adjustment to our construction loan. Roberto, do you want to take that one?
So, thank you, Michael. I've been, as you know, working with Raza Development Fund for quite some time, even prior to Leap Academy. Raza has been our funding partner even before we even had a building and provided us the necessary funding for us to have a bridge loan so that we could get started on the planning year for, for opening our school. They continue to be a good partner for us in this renovation of the fourth floor. The adjustment to our construction loan is coming on the heels of working with our contractors and working with the BBI management team to really try to reduce the cost of construction, the overruns that we've had. The biggest issue, as you are aware, is that we're still waiting to hear from the Department of Buildings on the need for fire suppression. According to what the code reads, we must do. And of course, we will follow what the code and the bill, Department of Buildings says we will do. That said, we're also looking for any way possible that we can continue to do the work that we're doing. And there could very well be, because of code issues, there may be a possibility that we will not need a standpipe. We don't know that for sure yet. We're waiting to hear a final determination from the Department of Buildings. If that's the case, then our cost overruns become much, much less. The overruns that we currently have are really the, the additional fees that we paid for DBI management to run the project in addition to some minor overruns, as any normal construction would have. We can ask specific questions on that when we get into the finance report. Bob and David Dewick are certainly aware, and they can speak more to the loan modification and what that means. I think the, the biggest issue for us is that we now have a fourth floor. It's got room for a third grade. We have it fully operational. The York Fresh Air Unit is blowing conditioned air throughout the building, and we're very pleased with that. So it's, it's, I was talking to a foundation just this Monday, the Lewis Calder Family Foundation, and they said, Roberto, had you not come up with that idea to really have a third grade, this COVID pandemic would have really hurt a lot more kids. And I said, you know, absolutely right. So we're, we're certainly grateful for Raza helping us to get to this far on, on our construction and getting the space necessary and open and safe so that we could have our kids in the building.
So we will be standing by for any new information and guidance from the Department of Buildings, I think, by early next month. And that will, I guess, determine the extent of, of any needed financial adjustment in terms of our, our loan.
That's correct.
Right. I think that's the, unless there, are there any questions about that piece? Otherwise, I think we're done with the, the updates.
Thank you all. All right, we can move it. Reports, starting with the finance committee. David and Bob?
Good evening, everyone. Bob, if you'd like to go through the dashboard quickly, I think that might be good for everyone. But the, the major highlights, I think, of this month come sort of in the revenue being down a little bit from what we expected. And then some cost adjustments upward, again, marginally. You know, really just a couple of points. But Bob, why don't you just give them the quick?
Sure. Just looking at the dashboard, the middle four graphs are our financial metrics as the state education department sees them. So right now, we meet all of our reporting metrics, which is good. Below that is just a highlight of the most recent enrollment that was submitted to NYC DOE, which we do every two months to get paid on per pupil. So you will see just a, a minor tick down on our general education enrollment from 244 to 241. And then our special education enrollment for students that we get supplemental payments for held flat at 25, which is good. So all that to say, on the second page, just key takeaways, there was a little bit of movement this month to David's point, but nothing too monumental. Our year-to-date surplus is just shy of $400,000 and our anticipated surplus, assuming all these numbers hold, is 200. is just shy of $400,000 and our anticipated surplus, assuming all these numbers hold, is $242,000, which is a little bit down from last month. Key takeaways, we are still in a holding pattern on our PPP forgiveness application. We received notification from Chase. They anticipated the application opening up relatively soon. So we'll be ready to go on that. We do have just shy of $400,000 of contingency funding built into this budget as a hedge against a per pupil decrease in the second half of the year. But we've been paid, we're set to be paid for about two-thirds of our per pupil funding and have yet to see any cuts from the state or the NYC DOE as it relates to per pupil. So hopefully that holds and we'll be able to recognize some of that contingency that we set aside in savings. And then just other key takeaways, I guess, we remain in a strong cash position with a little bit more than a half million dollars of cash in the bank as of the end of November. And no real movements, I think, on the balance sheet, as you've seen it before.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. I think that that's pretty much right. I mean, we see the revenue change due to the per pupil, not per pupil, but the actual change in enrollment of about four people, three people. And some other small items, but I think despite the cash position, it's important for everyone here to remember that those four lines, line graphs that Bob showed at the beginning, represent metrics that we need to beat from the school board. And among them, in that particular case, is the debt-to-asset ratio. So among the reasons we at this point need to carry cash is because we have a lot of exposure to debts that may or may not carry. And so that that position may change dramatically, and I think that's one of the things we keep looking at in the Finance Committee into when we get more aggressive about spending. But as I think the guys have already mentioned, there are some things out there that may cost us handsomely should we need to address them, and we're waiting to see how that will shake out with Department of Buildings and things like that. So as last month, I think this is looking to be on track and well managed. That's good. So thanks again.
Just on the funding issue, David and Bob, I don't know if you guys got the, we get a regular update from our friends at Empire Consulting, and the recent Board of Regents meeting that just took place, they talked about any kind of potential funding cuts in. And according to the Board of Regents and the consensus there of Empire Consulting is that the Regents are now talking about keeping charter school funding, quote, unquote, steady through 21, 22. And they throw in terms like, between charter schools and the district schools, that the charter school should get, quote, comparable treatment. It should be treated in a, quote, equitable manner. So I, I hope we get comparable treatment and we're treated equitably. And we'll see what that means going forward in the future, but I hope it's a positive trend.
Good to hear.
Thank you all. Do we have any more material to go through for finance, or do we need to take a formal vote on the loan expansion from Raza?
No, we don't need a vote on that at this time.
Okay. Okay, then we'll move into Executive Committee report. Nothing reporting out. Per se, we do have an executive session with the entire board later. But nothing specific here. We can move into the academic and accountability committee, which really the material here, we covered in our last meeting, the second grade data analysis that we just went through in the meeting earlier today. And we were anticipating possibly voting on the schedule change, but since that's still under discussion, we don't need to do that tonight. Was that, remind me, was that a formal agenda item? No? So we don't need to table it. Okay. All right, so that's, I think we are good on committee reports. Board norms and development, I think that, I'm not sure that we were recording when I asked about the status of Emily Fernandez's paperwork. It's not yet sent into SED. I will work with her after the meeting to make sure that gets in by the end of the month here to get an approval, fingers crossed, in January, so she can be a full member. I don't think we have any specific updates to this, other than I am, I owe everybody some potential draft internal benchmarks for the board portion of the SED framework that we should be kind of evaluating ourselves against as part of the overall kind of report outs each month. And I am going to commit to getting that to everybody for a draft review definitely before the January meeting. Thank you all for being flexible. Let's see, public comments, have we been joined?
We have our good friend and parent, Emma Woods, with us. Hello, Ms. Woods, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm Ms. Woods, thank you. I hope you're holding up okay during this last month of the longest year of our lives.
Yes, as good as I can. Thank you.
No problem. Do you have any comment to give, or?
No.
Okay. All right.
You're here. Right.
Okay. So then, at this point, we will break into an executive session to discuss a private personnel matter. As with the last meeting where we had an executive session, Michael will stay within this meeting to keep it open and everyone else is free to leave this portion of the meeting. The board members will, I will send you a meeting invitation with a Google Meet link. We're gonna avoid Zoom for the executive session just because of the host permissions causing a lot of confusion or just tech issues last and Google Meet's a pretty easy one-click process. So I will send that to you. I will exit this meeting go to the executive session with the other link and then come back formally into this meeting to adjourn. Thumbs up. Okay, great. For folks on the staff, thank you so much. I'm assuming that Michael is going to be the only person left standing by the time we come back. I just personally would like to, I think, I'm sure, I'm gonna assume the board would echo me on this. Thank you so much for the absolutely extraordinary effort that you've put in this year the worst possible circumstances, I think, that I've ever seen for any educator to be able to do their job for members to be able to just keep going in a lot of ways. And I know that, you know, that's just looking at the aspect of of things that we can see and hear about, which is the work that they're doing, and it's not even taking into account, you know, however many untold personal struggles that they're going through in the way that they're being affected by this pandemic. So if there's any way that we can, I mean, I'm happy to put together a message, obviously, from the board that can go to the staff and run it through everybody's kind of edits and approval on the board before we do that. I just wonder if there's, if there's any possible way that we can let the staff know how much we appreciate all the work that they've done and that we see their effort and that we're rooting for them. It's not something that we have to necessarily have an answer for right now, but if there's anything that you all have ideas for, you know, we're all open to to those.
Thank you, Gabrielle. And I wanted to thank again the board on behalf of the staff. We would certainly welcome whatever message conveyance is easiest for you and for the board. A note is always nice, and you can send it to me, and we can circulate it on the workplace, on the internal internet. We can also, if you wanted to do a little video, that's also good, too. We'll post that as well for our folks. A holiday message is always welcome, and we're really grateful.
We'll work on that. Absolutely. And thank you all. Again, it's not enough. It's not nearly enough, but.
Yeah.
And if we don't see you physically or virtually, please enjoy a safe and healthy holiday season.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you. All right, everyone, I'll see you in a Google meeting in a few minutes.
So the time is 7:08 PM. We are not adjourned yet, but the board's gone into executive session and they will be back here after that to vote to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry, Michael. I thought that we were really on the edge of ending there and we still had more to say.
No problem.
As soon as everybody comes back in, we'll, we'll vote to adjourn.
Did you have dinner while we were gone?
Yeah, Tuesday's pizza night in my house. I had a couple mushroom slices.
Oh, you're doing well.
I'm living the dream.
As the time went on, I was like, what is the plan for tonight? And it went from something, it will be reheated pizza night at my house. Yeah. Pretty glamorous. Okay, I think we're just waiting.
I still have to cut the birthday cake.
Oh, my goodness. That's right. It's my dilemma. Is it your oldest birthday?
My, my little guy. Come here, Jordan. Come say hi.
Happy birthday.
Yeah. Oh, they can't. I'm sorry.
Just blew your ears out.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Feliz cumple. Hey.
Thanks for sharing your mom with us for a little bit, for a lot.
For a lot of bit.
A lot bit, a big bit.
So we're almost done, okay?
Promise.
They can hear you. So if you speak, they can hear you.
Alright. Alright.
We're almost done. We're almost done, okay?
Okay. So thank you all again for all your time tonight. I hope that you have wonderful, safe, joyous holidays. It is 8:56. I would like to make, unless anybody else has any comments or questions before we adjourn. Nope. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much. I will see you on January 19th holiday.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Everybody.
How's it going? Thank you. Good night.